Mr. Mayor.
No.
Well.
Yeah, it's our liaison. Jordan.
Dave.
Lindsay.
Dave and Pat Lindsay. Yes. She's John and Tom's sister.
I'm Detroit and I'm breaking already.
Yeah.
There we go.
Does that...
Whenever you're ready back there. Welcome everyone to the July 29, 2013 Shakopee City Council meeting. We're having joint meeting tonight with Scott County. I call the meeting to order Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Layman.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Mayor Tackey.
Here.
And we're going to call the Scott County Board Meeting in order. Call the roll. Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Mendon.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Here.
And I'm Commissioner Wolf, thank you.
Thank you, alright. Approval of the agenda, do we have any additions or corrections agenda, Mr. McNeil?
If... Nothing for the joint meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anything from council? Alright, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Got one quick item of consent business to go through this evening. Mr. McNeil?
Actually, we'll do that on the city council.
Do that during the city council parts? Alright. We'll move this down there. Do you have agenda, anything you need to do on your side?
Nope.
Okay. So we're going to move on to item number four A, consideration of tax abatement for Data Card Corporation. Ms. DiMaggio.
Yes. We need to have the public hearing opened by both bodies.
How's Layman?
Make a motion, open a public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Any... So, Layman, Clay, any discussion on that?
It's for considering tax abatement for Data Card Corporation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We are in public hearing for council.
I'd look for a motion to open the public hearing also. Is motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second and discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, motion carries.
Good evening, my name is Samantha DiMaggio. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator for the City of Shakopee. Thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight, we are here to discuss a consideration of tax abatement for Data Card Corporation. Data Card's a privately held company which has been in existence for approximately forty years. They create high level, secure financial cards and government IDs. They're currently located in the City of Minnetoka. The company at this point has two options in which they consider. The first option would be to purchase a second location in the City of Minnetoka and do an expansion there. One issue that the company has with this is that they would need to separate their workforce. A section would have to move over to the second location and they wouldn't be able to house everyone in the same building. The second option would be to relocate to the City of Shakopee. One concern that the city had was that we wanted to make sure that the City of Minnetoka gave their support for this project. So I'm happy to say that they were contacted, that the City of Minnetoka gave their full support for this project. They want to find the best solution for Data Card. And if that's coming to Shakopee, then they're offering their full support for it. Data Card is proposing to relocate their current workforce, which is approximately six hundred and eighty positions. Their payroll right now is about sixty-five point one million, which is an average annual salary of ninety-five thousand per employee. The building that they're looking at here in Shakopee is 1187 Park Place. This was originally known as the ADC one building. It's currently housing TE Connectivity. Data Card's looking at purchasing this building, which is on twenty-two point one nine acres. And the building size is approximately three hundred and seventy thousand square feet. Here's a picture of 1187 Park Place. And here's a map that shows where it is located. You can see Park Place is in the red and you can see the Canterbury Road and 101 corridors and it's off of 12th Avenue East. This will be a thirty million dollar project for Data Card. Approximately fifteen point five million will be used for the acquisition of real and personal property. Ten million will be used for the construction and renovation of the building. And four point five will be used on furniture, fixtures, and equipment. The renovation of the building would include the following. They're going to do a conversion from the manufacturing space that currently exists in the building and they're going to make it office space. They're going to add a cafeteria and an employee workout room. They need to add additional parking spaces. And it's their plan to construct a second floor mezzanine with a connection bridge that will connect new offices to the existing offices. Here's one of the renderings that they've shown us. And here's another one that kind of shows the walkway that they'd like to create to connect the offices on the mezzanine level. Construction on this project is hopefully going to start in October of 2013. And it'll be completed in September of 2014. They've also talked about the possibility of adding a hundred and twenty-five new employees here in Shakopee over the next five years. Greater MSP prepared an economic impact study for the city, which I believe you found in your packets tonight. And they show that for every job, they will create a spinoff job of one point two jobs in the region. This didn't have as big of an analysis as some of the other projects we've looked at recently because this is already in the greater MSP region. So it kind of looks like the same jobs, but it will create additional jobs here in town. The developer is requesting a tax abatement incentive due to the high costs of rehabbing the inside of the building, adding the mezzanine, doing all the work on the parking lot. They've gone approximately fifty percent over what their first budget number showed. They've requested from the city a tax abatement not to exceed a total of three hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That would go over an eleven year period. And they've requested from the county a tax abatement not to exceed three hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars over the eleven year period. I tried to break down the numbers because unfortunately, some of the numbers that we've got, this is the first time the city has done a project like this. Our numbers have kind of seemed a little bit crazy and some of them have been inaccurate, so I apologize for that. I think it's important to note, when you look at the top of the chart, it shows that the 2013 market value of the building is nine point eight million dollars. It's our understanding that TE Connectivity had approached Scott County and asked them for a reduction in their taxes. So that rate was reduced to nine point eight million dollars. That reduction is scheduled to end in 2014. So immediately when Data Card purchases the building, their taxes are going to go up approximately two million one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So for the first two years, we are asking you to consider abatement on that increase of that two point one million. So for the first two years, the city share would be eleven thousand each year and the county share would be ten thousand each year. After Data Card does the improvements to their building, the market value of that building is expected to go up somewhere between two point five and four point five million. So the abatement then, for the nine years after the improvements are done, would be somewhere for the city share somewhere between twenty-three thousand and thirty-four thousand. The county share somewhere between twenty-three thousand and thirty-two thousand. So the total abatement combined for the nine years afterwards would be about somewhere between forty-six and sixty-seven thousand dollars annually. So when you look down at the total abatement revenue, right down below there, so the estimated total city abatement for eleven years, so that'd be the two years plus the nine years. It's somewhere between two hundred and forty and three hundred and thirty-four thousand. The county's abatement is somewhere between two hundred and thirty-two thousand and three hundred and twenty-four thousand. For the total abatement, it's somewhere between four hundred and seventy-two and six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars over eleven years. Some other incentives that they're possibly looking at applying for would be a Minnesota Investment Fund, forgivable loan in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. That's something that's still being negotiated with deed, so we'll see that at a later date when it comes time to apply. They've also potentially interested in the Minnesota Job Skills Partnership Matching Grant Program. There's approximately between three hundred and four hundred thousand for that. The school district was not included as part of this project, it was just the City of Shakopee and Scott County. And I know that there's also some fiber incentives and Gary has graciously agreed to discuss those with you. Do you have any other questions of me before I turn over to Gary?
What school district was that? Was that...
It would have been, actually I believe it would have been Shakopee.
Oh, that's Shakopee.
Yep.
And also, can I ask, can we go back one slide?
Sure.
That was awful. We're going to, the market value is nine point eight and it's going to go up to twelve million, so which one are we going to abate, the nine, eight, or the twelve?
That's a good question. Up at the very top, the ending value on the building is going to go from nine point eight million up to somewhere between fourteen to sixteen million dollars. Once the taxes go up and then they do the improvements on the building, that's what they think the final market value will be on the building, somewhere between fourteen and sixteen thousand, or sixteen...
And that's where we'll start from, is that our starting point?
We're actually, Gary, do you want to try to answer it? Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, member of the council. What you are abating, if you approve this request, would be the value above nine point eight million. So you would be abating the difference between the nine point eight and the twelve. And then, that would be in the first two years. And then the twelve million to either the fourteen seven thirty-three or sixteen nine twenty, depending upon what the actual value ends up being once the construction is done. So your starting value is nine point eight million and in essence, for the eleven year period, you're pretty much locking the value, the taxable value, at that amount.
Commissioner Layman.
So if I'm understanding this, what we're currently collecting to date in tax revenue, we won't be losing.
Councilman Layman, that is correct. The taxes that are being collected today and what was, what's collected in 2013 would be frozen basically. So you'll still continue to receive those taxes. There's no new tax money that would be received until the abatement was, was completed.
Now... Were you done?
Go ahead.
Is this, is this a change in policy at the county? Because I didn't think we could do it this way. I thought we had to go by that next year's number.
No, it's in terms of what we've done in the past, and that was actually why I asked Samantha to allow me to, to conclude. Is because this is a bit different than the other abatements that the county has done. Generally, the county has done abatements only of the new construction value. But as Samantha said, this is a bit of a different type of a project because they're really coming in and doing a lot to another building. It's a bit, if you look at the other abatements like TriStar, they were coming in and building an entirely new building. What Data Card has requested is that based upon their financial modeling of the total cost to make this move, they're asking that basically their taxes be frozen in time. So it is different than what you've done before. Also different in the fact that with the exception of TriStar, TriStar was also a little bit different. TriStar, you did a fifteen year abatement. Generally, we do by policy nine year abatements. We've generally not gone above that nine years, but we have made exceptions to that. So there's nothing in the statute that would not allow you to do this, but it is different than what we have done previously.
Because we're already abating, you know, taxes and so are we setting a new precedent on this? That's, you know, I don't know, it's just...
We, we are not, Mr. Chair, we are not actually setting any type of a precedent. And each of these abatements are really projects that are looked at and considered on their own. So if you look at when you considered the Compass abatement, we were looking at fifty percent as opposed to a hundred percent abatement. As I mentioned before, when you looked at TriStar, we were looking at fifteen years as opposed to nine years. So each of these projects has really taken basically a life of its own as to what it is that we're taking a looking at and how the project is developing and what appears to be appropriate to try and move the project forward.
Any other questions? Commissioner Mendon.
Mr. Chair, a couple of things I don't understand. One thing, you were talking eleven years, then nine years. And when exactly does the abatement start? And also, just one more thing. I noticed that the school district isn't involved, which I, I mean, I think that's great that they didn't include the school district, but... So the school district, starting next year, is looking to gain money on this, right? I mean, if that goes from value of ninety-nine million eight hundred to twelve and then up to sixteen, so... Any idea how much more money they're going to get because of this in the school district?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mendon, no. I don't think that, you know, we could actually do a calculation based upon their current, current tax rate. But until they set whatever their, their new levy will be, there's no real way to determine what this specific project would bring to them. But you are correct, that they will see the increase in revenue from this property based upon the increases in value next year. And then they would see additional revenue increases when the project, I'll back up again, when the project is finished, depending upon whether they're at the fourteen million or the, or the roughly seventeen million dollar value. So they would not be abating the tax and they would see that increase based upon this particular piece of it for the school district. This abatement would actually start next year. So really what Data Card is asking, which I, which I was saying, is a bit different than, than other abatements that we've done, would be to abate the taxes basically from this point forward, freeze those taxes in place for that eleven year period of time. And, and so that makes it a bit different than what was done with Emerson. But if you really look at the abatements that the county has done, we did Chart. Chart was a, was a nine year abatement. We did Emerson, which was a nine year abatement. TriStar was a fifteen year abatement. Compass was a nine year, but it was only a fifty percent. And this would be an eleven year, starting even as the project is underway. So each of these are a little bit different and based upon how the project itself has developed.
Thanks. Questions on this side?
I also, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chair, members of the board and the council, wanted to talk a little bit in that the staff's recommendation would be to approve the abatements, to approve the county's resolution, which would be 2013-139, and the city's resolution, which would be number 7333. I would also be asking the board to approve the fiber incentive that we discussed previously to a maximum of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which is what is in the RBA. But it's not actually in the resolution because it's not part of an abatement. But I would be asking the board to approve up to that amount. At this point, we haven't worked out all the details with Data Card, but that is what we view as the maximum that the county might need to spend in order to allow them the use of our fiber. And I would want to point out one error, that if you approve the resolution, I would ask you to make an amendment. As Samantha said, the numbers on this changed substantially over the period of time as, as we were working on the project. And not all the numbers in the board's resolution appear to have been changed. If you look at three point zero two, item number three point zero two F, it says, "In no event shall the annual amount of the abatement paid to the developer exceed twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars." That should actually read the same as the RBA, which is thirty-five thousand zero fifty-five. The total amount, three hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars, is correct. But there is a period where the annual amount exceeded that twenty-nine thousand and went to the thirty-five thousand. And I noted that it was changed in the RBA. It was not changed in the resolution. So if you adopt the resolution, you would need to adopt it, hopefully with that particular amendment.
Could this be in both resolutions?
I haven't read the city's resolution, Councilor Clay, so I would have to ask Mark.
No, I believe ours is correct.
Alright, do we have any further questions about the project? Commissioner Layman.
Mayor, has anybody seen the actual P and L from this company to see if there's a need for assistance?
I have not received a P and L from them, no. But Mr. Jeff Smolinski is here tonight from the company and I think he'd be able to talk with you about some of the costs that have been incurred and what will happen as they move here to town, what other additional costs they could have.
Okay, and then my next question would be, how many jobs are we expecting to receive in our local economy? Not spinoff jobs, but folks from Shakopee getting hired and getting a job.
And I think that's something Jeff would be good at answering as well.
I could just, Mark Neil, City Administrator, there is one other issue regarding, at least from the city's standpoint. We have a policy that requires two hundred percent of federal minimum wage for beneficiaries of abatement or tax increment from the city. This will add, I believe, her in the six hundred and eighty job classification range with very handsome average salary. However, we are aware that there are about twenty employees that are under our fourteen fifty threshold and that will be something that will be, need to be negotiated, so.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you very much for considering this. In regards to questions, just following up with Mark, the, we have some really entry level positions. And again, we don't expect these will be part of the new jobs we'll add here. As an example, we have some janitorial jobs that we used to contract out. This past year, we decided to bring that back in-house and the starting wage for that, I think, is like thirteen or thirteen fifty an hour. But I would say that probably on two hands and possibly one foot, I can count all the jobs that actually fall below your minimum requirements. If you take a look at the past three years, the average salary of all the jobs for those past three years hired here in Minnetoka or in this state of Minnesota was seventy-eight thousand dollars a year average wage. So I do understand the consideration of the issues of the fourteen fifty. I think, you know, ninety-nine percent were there, but we do, you know, if we need to change the very low entry level positions with no skills and so on in there, we would be willing to consider if that's an obstacle for you. The issue as far as the jobs, so one of the issues, as a matter of fact, I was telling Samantha, kind of half jokingly and half kind of seriously, that based on tonight's drive to Shakopee, it's a really difficult decision to come here because I literally left at five o'clock. Jim Borst actually left ten minutes before I did. I made a real quick maneuver on Pioneer Trail, went through the bluffs, came down Dell Road, hit the dirt road, found, backed my way into St. Cloud and passed him. He just arrived here, two hours and twenty minutes from leaving from Minnetoka, coming here today. Now, I understand it's a short term problem, but that is a very big concern with our employees. The challenge we have is that if we, if you decide to move forward on this and we as a company decide to come to Shakopee, we have at least a twelve month waiting period before we can physically move. The challenge for us becomes, and it's, it's very easy to have a number of employees not want to move, but in thirty days you move them, they learn to kind of like it or they'll choose to leave. Lots of them will tend to like it and not leave. If you give them twelve months to think about it, they've got a lot of time to shop for jobs, look for other opportunities, try to stay close to home. And with the economy a bit picking up, at least for Minnesota, we believe that we run a very high risk if we make the Shakopee decision, that those six hundred and eighty jobs that we have today in Minnetoka, that we'll lose some proportion of those jobs. Those jobs, we would hope, would be readily filled by folks that we believe already exist and live in Shakopee that would choose, rather than fighting the traffic across 169 to get to a job up in the cities and so on, would have the opportunity to join us. We, being in Minnetoka, with the growth that's been up in the area, especially with companies with UHG, even though we're a manufacturer of high tech equipment, buyers are buyers. HR folks are HR folks. Software and IT folks exist in all these companies. So we do combat with very large companies four positions. We actually think there could be an added advantage for us, knowing that a lot of those folks actually live in this community and might choose to drive fifteen or twenty minutes to work as opposed. So to answer you what those jobs would be, we believe there will be an add the next three to five years of a hundred and twenty or more positions that will be new positions. Many of those, based on the skill sets, should be available to folks already here in Shakopee. But we also believe there's going to be a, a number of positions that are going to open up in the next twelve months, kind of as a reduction or six eighty of folks who choose not to come if we decide to come, that that immediately will then open up some positions as well for folks to be considered. So there's no reason that a number of them, you know, residents of Shakopee should not be able to fill the requirements of our jobs. And quite honestly, that's one of the kind of bending factors for us to really think about coming here, is that it will be difficult for us to move. But once we establish a camp here, we think there's actually a real strong base of employees, at least what we've seen, looking at the demographics of the folks that live here in the community.
Commissioner.
And I would just point out that your associates would enjoy a reverse commute. That they would be coming here in the morning and leaving in the evening, so...
It is, it is interesting that the building that we are actually considering buying, the prior, or the current tenants of it actually were prior tenants of the building that we're considered if we expand in Minnetoka. And those folks made that move about ten years ago. And as a matter of fact, one of the gentlemen that, who's been with the company thirty plus years, lives up in Delano. And he tells us how wonderful the reverse commute is and he hasn't moved and he still does the commute from Delano. So we continue to try to convince our employees there is a reverse commute, we think it'll be helpful. The current 169 situation kind of, you know, is a little distraction right now, but we think it'll be helpful. We think it'll be helpful.
Commissioner Whiting.
You know, our benefits package is exclusive of benefits, but can you talk about your employee benefit programs and anything you might offer?
Yeah, major folks be able to speak to it much better than us. I can tell you that we're competitive with any of the other major corporations here in the cities as far as what we offer. We do cost share with our employees like most companies do. We offer options for employees, we do have a cafeteria plan you can pick.
We do have a cafeteria plan you can pick, is as strong as a program, which would be like a PPO program with Blue Cross Blue Shield, or you can go to a high-risk program if you feel that, you know, you want to pay a high copay and pay a very, you know, small contribution towards your insurance. We have a, if you would call, cafeteria plan, so our employees have the benefit of kind of choosing the plan that they see fits them the best. But even our best plan, I would say, I've been there with the company now for the past five years. I've, for the first time, have taken a change in one of the plans. I've finally have moved off a PPO plan, which I was convinced I never would, but the options, and they do a very nice job of educating the folks, based on your condition and so on, what fits you better, but you have multiple options. I think anyone would find that, that the plans that we have benefits, we have dental, we have eye care and so on, programs you can participate, including extended life insurance and so on.
Council Lehman, did you have another question?
Yeah, I was waiting for the response to the profit and loss statement, to whether they actually need the assistance or not.
Well, if you take a look at it, we're a private company. We've been private for the, I think at one time they were public prior to like 1985 or so on. We are owned by a single family in Germany, but we are operating as a completely independent company. So our ability to sustain, make our investments, so on, are wholly dependent on the profit and losses that we make as a single company. All of our acquisitions that we do as a company, it's required that we carry the burden of making those acquisitions, funding them and so on. In order to support our growth, we have two objectives. We have a target growth, which we call our CAGR growth, based on organic growth, which we require to try to grow about 7 percent. And on top of that, we have a target of growing another 4 percent by buying other companies. So could we fund this whole thing by ourselves? Absolutely. Can we fund the 30 million? We can. The problem is, in order to do that and also sustain the growth, we have to make some decisions. Do we spend all the money on a building, or do we reserve some of that funding for the growth and the acquisition strategy that we have? Our options here is really an option between which one is the most cost-effective option for us and the best long-term strategy, whether we stay in Minnetoka or whether we come to here. The reason to meet with you folks today in the county is to understand, are there some incentives? We did do a budget together when we looked at this. The budget came in at $20.8 million, I believe, to actually come to this building based on all the information we had at the time, including a tax base that was much lower than we, here it is today. And we then went out and actually had our drawings and our designs, actually gone out with some construction firms to actually quote them. Two things have happened. One, our requirements to convert more of the manufacturing space to office space. So in order to bring more of those high-paying jobs, again, of 680 employees, 500 are professionals. I mean, we're talking about, you know, minimum bachelor's degree or higher for those positions. In order for us to continue to grow those positions, we need more and more office space. By converting more of the manufacturing space, the building costs went up. And on top of that, in the last probably nine months, construction material costs have risen nearly 19 percent. We've heard anywhere from 19 to 22, just based on builders back, if you take a look, homes are being built once again and so on, and the materials are being driven up on cost. The combination of those two brought the project in almost 10 million more than we had originally planned. Our other plan didn't really go up much because we were going to take our current existing building, do some upgrades, but it was literally relocating a chunk of our employees to another building. That has a different set of challenges for us. Because our product is so technical in nature, the combination of having engineers and manufacturing folks and manufacturing engineers and marketing folks all in the same building is key because every one of our projects could be custom for any particular country, for a national ID program or for a passport program. And to try to remotely move any one of those groups would be very difficult for us. So we have sat down and said, we have a path that could move about 150 to 175 people from our building that would not be those folks, but it would require us to move a lot of groups that we're not sure those folks would be that comfortable with moving. You know, we can do things remotely. We have 45 locations across the globe doing sales and service and support and so on, but we haven't remotely tried to move teams that are like financial teams, credit collection teams and so on, outside of the core business. So we have two different avenues. We've taken a look at this and said, if financially this decision to go to Shakopee can work in our favor, and when it came in at 10 million over, it really started to tip the scale the other way, that's when we entertained the discussions with the city and county and said, if there's anything you guys can do to help turn it back, you can't make up the difference. We don't expect you to make up the difference. We don't expect to go after the school systems and so on. But if there's anything the county and city can do to at least pass us a baton, to help us try to make this work, and we can bring those kind of good-paying jobs to the community, we think it's a win-win both ways, we think it may be enough for us to hold the decision to try to move towards the Shakopee. Again, could we fund it? We are a profitable company. We don't deal with debt today, but we use our profits to fund our growth and fund our, we've doubled our R and D investments in the last three years. Last year, we doubled our software development teams. This year, we're going to double it again. So we're making investments across the board, and during the big downturn in the economy for everybody else, we actually doubled down and started spending some more money in some other areas to be prepared when the economy turned around. So the question is, where do you put your dollars? Any help from the city or county would help us make a decision this direction and allow us to continue to move in the growth direction that we seek.
Any questions or comments?
Council Clay.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you coming down here.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to make a couple of quick points. With, that the work going on on the Bloomington Ferry Bridge is the first time that's happened since it opened over a decade ago, and it's only scheduled for a few weeks. The other thing, starting next year, there'll be, on the river crossing we have right here in town, just starting a few blocks away from here, they'll be changing it to a bridge over any potential flood areas, and it'll be four lanes instead of two lanes, which will help with that reverse commute for your employees and to make sure that you'll be able to get the, you know, here on, work in time. But more than that, I wanted to talk a little bit about property taxes. I suspect that the property tax rate here in Shakopee is lower than the one you're experiencing now in Minnetoka, or?
On a per-square basis, but again, our property lot size is smaller in Minnetoka than it would be here.
Per-value?
What's that?
As far as the, your property tax rate as the, compared to the estimate of market value of your properties there, I think that you'll find the tax rate here is lower than than it is.
I don't have the exact math to check you. Yeah, that's the point. If we put the two together, there was, you know, it would change the game. Today, we only 239,000 square feet on the property that we have today.
Also, the property tax rate, nine or 11 years from now, I think you're going to find an even bigger difference between here and where you're, we're currently located once all these new jobs and businesses that are all of a sudden popping up like mushrooms after a spring rain. When those all come fully onto the tax rolls, everybody's going to be enjoying some significantly lower, you know, property tax rates for residents and commercial industrial properties. So you'll find an even greater benefit by the time your abatement expires and you're back playing tax, you know, those all coming online.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I think at the same token, we take a look at it, you know, that's why one of the things, though, too, we took a look at and said, let's not go after everything. So for example, if you take a look at even what's being proposed here, the majority of the property tax that Data Card will pay to, well, I'll say, the total property tax actually will go up fairly significantly, even with the abatements, because the majority of the tax, protected by state statutes and so on, and the fact that we're not asking for the schools to participate, says that regardless, we're going to see an increase off the base of what the taxes today. When we did our modeling, we based it off of 2013's tax value. Even with the abatements that the city and the county would come for, we've had to change our model and significantly raise it because based on the estimates that would come in, the majority of the property tax would still go up, and we would still be paying, though it would not go to county or would not go to the city for what you're abating, it would still go to the other things that are supported by the total property tax today. And that would not be reduced. That would actually increase.
Including all the fiscal disparities, correct?
Correct.
Any further questions?
Is there any other presenters to any more information or? No? Okay, well, this is a.
Public hearing.
So if there's anyone from the public who would like to come up and?
Anyone like to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the city. Council Whiting.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay.
Make a motion closing the public hearing.
A motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carries. Our public hearing is closed.
All right, thank you, sir. So on the city side, we have resolution number 7333, consideration of tax abatement for Data Card Corporation. Council Whiting.
Make a motion to, for resolution number 733, a resolution granting a property tax abatement for Data Card Corporation in the city of Shakopee.
Senator Clay, any discussion? I actually have a question real quick for Mr. McNeil. Do we need to do anything with this for the hourly wage, or is that something we address at a different point?
That will be included in the development agreement. So we'll be discussing that.
At a future date.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion approving resolution 2013-139. Has amended, you had two amendments. One was the dollar amount on that not to exceed, and then did you also want to include the fiber optic incentive as well?
That would be correct.
With those two amendments.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And there is a second. Any discussion?
If I could just make a comment. You know, you've got, the thing with this is that it's, it's, it's the salaries that are being paid there. There is, there is so much, I always figure when people are getting that kind of money and they're getting paid that kind of money, it's so typical there, well, they're able to go to lunch. And when you go to lunch, you, you spend money in the community. You know, even if you live in a diner or wherever, you're still here for the eight, nine hours that you're here. And there's so much spin behind it. Tom, you know that from your parents' store. I mean, I know that from growing up in the restaurant business. Steve, you know that from your printing business. There's just so much spin locally, and there's so much more disposable income there. It's, it's, it's a good thing. And I know, you know, you get a lot of smaller business people that will make the statement right away that, you know, it's benefiting the big people or whatever. But in something like this, when you have salaries that are like that, it's, it's the world we live in.
I think you're right. It's a win-win-win for.
It is.
The company, the city, the county, the whole place, and everything spins off. You're right. I don't like giving these abatements either, but.
I know, I know, but it's, it's.
There's a lot of potential, is what there is. So if there's no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to, I don't remember, 4B in, council? Looks like there's a question. I'll wait for that. Mark, are we moving on to 4B?
Yes.
Okay.
Should be three, sorry, I'm looking at the two different agendas. It would be three, excuse me, 4B and three on the county agenda.
On the city agenda.
Do they need a minute or two to get set up here?
I believe so. Should we wait for?
Are you ready?
I'm ready whenever you guys are.
Okay. I'm going to go shoot them back in.
Just so excited.
There's thousands of people watching in your forum.
We like to say there are millions of people watching.
Mr. Wolf, controlling important members.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so item 4B on the city agenda, adopt resolution authorizing submittal of comments to Minnesota Department of Transportation on the Minnesota State Highway Investment Plan. Ms. Fries.
Good evening, the board and, and honorable city council members. I'm happy to be here tonight. You have, I believe it was distributed to you a draft letter, and what I'm going to do here briefly, although it's a pretty long presentation, is go through a presentation that Mendot has been providing as part of its public outreach for the State Highway Investment Plan that they're currently entertaining comments on. The, the Menship Plan, as they call it, the Minnesota Highway Investment Plan, is part of Mendot's family of plans. It's part of their stepping down from their 50-year vision, which they just completed about a year ago, the 50-year Minnesota Go! vision. And now what they're doing is their multimodal plans, their bike plan, their freight plan, their highway investment plan. And the highway investment plan is made up of about three different components. The first four years are what are included in the State Transportation Improvement Program. The years five through 10 are part of the 10-year highway improvement program that they have. And then out in years 11 through 20, they're more of the fiscally constrained, yet not designated projects that are in their investment plan. Why is Menship important? It's very important to Mendot because they're charged with maintaining the state highway system, and that involves 12,000 miles statewide on the highway system. As we've learned through our efforts here in the county, transportation improvements are very, a very important part to the economic vitality and quality of life that we have here, as well as it's important for all communities statewide. And having our highway plan well-connected with multimodal, other multimodal plans is very important. Mendot is charged with having a fiscally constrained 20-year plan that guides and communicates publicly how they are going to invest their money. This is a slide that just overviews the state highway revenue sources that feed into the fiscally constrained plan. About 31 percent of the revenue over the 20-year plan will come from federal sources, and then the remainder of the sources come from a variety of different things, which is, and primarily the state fuel tax. You'll often hear this referred, referred to as State Trunk Highway Fund, and over the time period that we're talking about, there will be $18 billion of anticipated revenue from these various sources. The one thing, though, as they've been going through this process, that's pretty astounding, if you look at this chart, they've projected their revenues out through that 2033 time period, and they've adjusted it for inflation that they anticipate over the course of this time period. And as you can see, the blue represents their actual buying power, and the gray represents the projected revenue over this 20-year, 20-some-year period. So as you can see, the amount of money that they actually have available in terms of real dollars is much less. They have 10 investment categories that they focus in on in their highway improvement plan. Asset management, which is maintaining the existing system, critical connections, and that involves interregional corridors, mobility in the Twin Cities, the bike infrastructure, traveler safety, which focuses in on safety projects. And a project that, or an area that we often hear about is regional and community improvement priorities. These are these locally initiated projects that don't really fit into their funding categories, but they do have programs like the corridor investment management program where they fund some of those kinds of projects. And then their 10th category is really administration and project development or project support that they have to fund in order to put projects on the ground. They have an evolving transportation need, the highway system. We've heard this message even here in our own county, it's aging. 50 percent of their pavements are over 50 years old. 35 percent of the bridges are over 50 years old. There is an increasing. There is an increasing, um, pressured, but emphasis, emphasis on a multimodal system and to integrate that into the highway, um, system itself. And there's also an increasing pressure that they feel to support local economic development projects through some of their grant programs that have been established statewide, like the Transportation and Economic Development Program. And those programs are intended to help both economic development and communities' quality of life. Mendot has, um, $30 billion to meet their performance targets and key objectives. And this is how it breaks out in terms of, of the need. They have, um, uh, the bulk of their needs in that asset management or that preservation of the existing system category. And then, uh, the next highest category of needs is in that critical connections and Twin Cities mobility, um, category. As you can see, if you go back to that number that I presented on how much they had in projected revenues, they have far more, um, needs than they have revenues projected. They looked at, uh, several approaches to how they would invest, uh, their, um, resources towards these different, um, management goals, the asset management, traveler safety, critical connections. And they had, um, two approaches that they really evaluated, um, in depth. Approach A and approach C here. Approach B is really, um, the approach that, moving forward, they'll be taking in terms of what's getting incorporated into their plans. And the key thing, uh, as you can tell, the green bean asset management. In one approach, approach A, you'll see, uh, them meeting more of those needs. And approach C, they'll be focusing in on spending more money on mobility and those, uh, regional, uh, critical connections and some of those, uh, local community priority projects. The approach B is really, um, somewhat of a compromise approach of those two extreme, um, approaches. They had a public outreach process, which occurred, uh, over the past, uh, eight months or so. And some of the things that they, they heard from the public was to pursue a diverse program, to address the pavement needs strategically on their system, that the public expected a network of well-maintained roads. And that was very critical for freight movement and rate, regional access. That they wanted the, the state to promote economic competitiveness and quality of life through greater mobility investment. And, um, of course, they wanted the, the department to remain responsive to needs as they evolved. Mendot, uh, did an own, its own internal evaluation process of those alternatives. And there was general agreement that making progress to, towards all goals and objectives was desirable. Where the public leaned, um, towards C as a greater emphasis on multimodal and local priorities, Mendot leaned, um, on a greater emphasis towards maintaining their existing assets, on their in, internal, uh, review of the investments. So, um, they have developed a set of investment priorities. And they've been influenced by this public input. They've been influenced by the state requirements, uh, imposed on, by the state legislature and, and other, um, other mechanisms, federal transportation policy, Mendot's own policy, uh, the bridge con, uh, conditions, uh, their responsiveness to these issues. And then, their maintenance operation budget, which is, um, also comes out of the trunk highway fund. So, their, their funding sources cap for both maintenance and construction projects. When they, um, put forward their investment priorities, uh, they use the following rationale. They want to diversify their investments, uh, across those, uh, investment categories for as long as possible. They definitely want it to meet the government accounting board standards, which is a minimum condition standards and affects the state bond rating if they fall below that. Also, what happened during this time period is that the federal government, um, Congress, enacted MAP 21, which is a federal transportation reauthorization bill. And in that bill, it set targets and maximum, um, emphasis on how those federal funds should be spent towards meeting those targets. And, um, the other investment priority that Mendot had is to try to maintain what they call district flexibility. And in Mendot, if you're familiar with how they're organized, they have, uh, eight different districts throughout the state. We're within the metro district, uh, to our south. The Mankato District, uh, into the southeast would be the Rochester District. And they cover those areas. In the metro area, it's the seven-county, um, metro, uh, region that Mendot's responsible for, plus Shisago County. So, this is what's in their plan. This is their planned investments, uh, for years one through 10. As you can see here, how, um, it, it focuses, um, quite a bit on pavement condition, but not quite as much as, uh, the one approach, um, that you saw earlier. The biggest strengths of this, uh, are that it progresses, all it, it progresses, in all investment categories, um, some activity, uh, in those categories. So, they're making progress in their goals in all those categories. It mitigates what they call key risks, uh, that they have to their system and to their infrastructure. And it lines up pretty well with the public input, um, which wanted more emphasis on, um, those regional and community, uh, priorities and Twin Cities mobility. Its biggest weakness, uh, to this, uh, first 10 years is that, uh, it limits response to growing and vol, and evolving needs. And with it, um, the assets will decline on what they call the non-high, the non-national highway system, part of the Mendot system. And that's, that's kind of a key thing because the federal money focus in, in the MAP 21 was really focused in on making sure that the national highway system, which is roadways like, uh, 169 and, and all of the freeways, but also roads like County Road 42 and some of the non-freeway state highways. It really focused on keeping, uh, those principal arterial roadways, um, conditions declining less than some of the rest of the system. In years 11 through 20, uh, you can see there's a dramatic shift to how their investments are being made. They really focus in, uh, in on, um, those asset management investments primarily. Very little of the money is going to any of the other activities. They have, um, about 300 million over that time period going to traveler safety. But you can, um, see that, uh, mobility and critical connections, those types of investments are pretty much disappearing, um, from the pie chart. So, they're very small. So, um, this, the biggest strength of the investments that they're making in years 11 through 20 is that it will keep with those government accounting standards, those minimum conditions that they're required to meet. And then, it will alleviate some growing pressure on their operations budget to keep roads safe. Of course, the weaknesses are, um, their assets will decline on those higher-volume roadways. And they will make no, um, progress, really no appreciable progress towards the, those non-asset goals. The corridor connections, uh, and, uh, um, traveler safety. And there's many unfunded needs. In terms of their explanation, um, for the shifts in 11 through 20, um, of the state plan, it's rather dramatic. But, if you go back to that one graphic that I showed you at the beginning about the buyer, buying power and how inflation's gonna affect their revenue, that's a key component of why they have less money to spend on those kinds of investments in the second part of the plan. And so, they will be focusing in on trying to meet those performance targets in MAP 21 and, and, in, uh, the government accounting standards. And there's just, uh, ongoing stewardship responsibility to maintain those assets for future generations. So, the focus will not be in adding new things to the system. I'm gonna buzz through these kind of quickly. There's a lot of detail in them. And for the sake of, uh, the presentation tonight, I'm not really the expert. If you have some questions on some of them, we can come back to them at the end. But, um, basically, uh, what this shows is that they're, they're maintaining pavements, uh, through this time period. But, but you can see there is some decline, um, in, uh, the conditions over the time period. Mobility, um, they're making some, um, inroads. But, on, through, um, the later part of the decade, there's, or through the later part of the plan, there's really no investment in reliability issues are gonna continue to grow. So, that's kind of the key takeaway on that. Transit, I mean, traveler safety, um, they're gonna focus on lower-cost, high-benefit treatments throughout the system. And they're gonna, gonna continue to focus in on their towards-zero-death initiative, partnering with, uh, um, the State Patrol and the local, um, agencies on that. So, um, pretty much throughout the time period, they're gonna focus on those lower-cost, high-benefit treatments. Regional and community improvements, based on this investment strategy, they'll have some of those types of projects, um, through 2023. But they'll virtually, um, fall off. And they will not be able to, uh, support any more of those kinds of projects, um, beyond 2023 with the current revenue stream. They have, uh, they, they have tried, uh, to articulate throughout this process how they go about selecting projects. One of the things you'll hear, and it's, uh, the term is not so common here in the metro area because we have, uh, the Twin Cities Metropolitan Region and the, uh, Transportation Advisory Board and the Transportation, um, Advisory, or the Technical Committee to the Advisory Board that helped with that process. That's really our ATP process here in the metro area. In all of the rest of the districts in the outstate area, they, um, established what they called an area transportation partnership process in which they have a team of local elected officials, uh, partnering with Mendot staff to help make, um, decisions about programming, um, in their STIP and 20-year plan as well. MAP 21 emphasized making progress towards the targets, uh, for federal performance measures on that national highway system. So, it shifted the emphasis, uh, from some of those local, um, roadways or the more local roadways on Mendot's systems. And, uh, it modified the project selection process to ensure that adequate progress, um, would occur towards those national highway to, system targets. Because there are penalties in MAP 21, uh, that will occur if Mendot doesn't meet their targets on those national highway system roadways. The new process has two programs that they use to mitigate, mitigate risk. And those are really their internal management programs and how they, they work with their district offices and their central office, um, uh, expert offices to make programming decisions. They have a statewide performance program, um, in which projects are, are selected kind of centrally based on those performance targets. And then, they also have what they call a dis, district risk management program, which is a, um, a, a pool of funding that they, uh, work among districts to decide if a district's at risk with a, a certain, uh, performance measure that they need to meet, that they share some of that funding and shift that, um, to mitigate those risks that a particular district may have in one of those categories. One of the things that Mendot's struggling with, as always, when there's a new, um, federal legislation and it requires implementation, they have to align their decision-making processes to, uh, um, meet those requirements. Sometimes that means that they don't, uh, they aren't able to do the public involvement like they would like to. But really, uh, this is a, a funding, uh, shift that they've had to make. And it will be required for that project selection that's currently going on for the 2017 projects that will be entered into the STIP with this next update of the statewide transportation improvement program. The region here has already, um, started their public involvement process on that particular document as well. Then going forward, uh, they're committed to, um, starting from the beginning of the process to, uh, incorporate this project, um, selection process in their public involvement process. They are committed to that public involvement process. And they wanna, um, involve local partners on a technical advisory team. They're adjusting MAP 21, um, as the rulemaking occurs. Rulemaking will probably be going on for another 12 months or so before all the final targets are in place. So, it is, uh, somewhat of a moving target at this point, uh, for the state and for the, the locals trying to understand how that all fits together. So, what does it mean, uh, for a project to be in menship? Uh, as, um, as historically, if you're in years one through four, which is considered the tip or the STIP or the statewide, um, improvement program, we have lots of acronyms in this world. It's really considered a committed proj, project. And it's highly likely to be delivered during that four-year, uh, window. In years five to 10, they're in the budget, they're in their program. But there are possible changes. One project might get bigger. And as a result of that, they maybe need to move another project, um, out or scale it back a little. But when you get into that, years 11 through 20, um, no projects are listed. They're really, um, done by those target areas, either bridge management or pavement management. And, uh, they're, uh, long-range planning years for the department. The, uh, department is committed to a statewide performance program. They're gonna focus in on those performance ti, targets that we talked about in, um, MAP 21. They're gonna focus in on the NHS system, um, with their investments. And, and those roadways actually include 169 here in Scott County, I-35, um, County Road 42, and also, um, County Highway 21 here in Scott County as a part of that system. So, there are a couple of local, um, county roads that are part of the, um, national highway system. The district rich, risk management program is really that program that they're gonna focus in on those non-NHS highways and address unique co, conditions at the district level. An example of that would be trunk highway 13. As it heads to the south, it's a non-H NHS route. After it, um, heads to the south, they're in Savage. Here's a quick summary of the metro planned investments. So, this is stepping it down from the statewide, um, pie charts that I showed you before into the metro investment program. They're pretty, um, close, um, to the statewide investments when you look at, um, years 2014 through 2017. But one thing, I think, uh, when you get into the details here, there is a fair amount of, of money that's going into, um, the Twin Cities mobility. But most of that will be fo, focused in on, uh, improvements like MenPass, um, and finishing 610. Those are the key projects that are on the metro investment list, uh, that fall into that mobility category. So, just kind of in summary here, I'm gonna show you a couple of, uh, uh, maps which show the projects in the STIP, uh, the statewide improvement program that are in the metro area, the Scott County, kind of the southwest metro. And as you can see here, um, there's really only a couple of projects that are in the next four years. There's a project down in 169, um, in the Jordan area, which is really fixing some drainage issues and pavement down there. And number 15 on their map is actually the interchange project that the county is leading. And then, uh, they have a pavement preservation focused in on, um, trunk highway 13, which is at project number 52. As you recall, the, they identify lists of projects also in years five through nine. And these are the projects that are on, that are within Scott County and, and the general area. and the general area in the southwest metro that are on their list for those five to nine years. These are projects that are likely to happen. They could be moved from one year to another, they could be re-scoped a little bit. But in looking at the details of all these projects that you see up here, they're pretty much all pavement preservation or culvert replacement types of projects. No major investment in any kind of expansion projects on that list. It's all pretty much pavement and culvert infrastructure asset management types of projects. I think the message that they've been providing to all of us who have heard this presentation from MINDOT is that given the projected $12 billion funding gap, they're going to have many unfunded priorities. In years one through 10, the asset condition declines on the non-national highway system roadways, and many local priorities will not be addressed. And then in years 11 through 12, the asset condition will continue to decline on the non-interstate roadways. And then there's many unfunded needs in virtually all of the categories in the years 11 through 20. You have in your, before you, a draft letter that the city and county staff have prepared for you to consider. Basically, that letter has the following key points. It supports the completion of that 610 highway project and the other regional road connections on the regional system that are identified in the plan. It supports the inclusion of the interregional corridor system in the plan. I think that this is one thing that we noted as staff that we were happy to see because in the last 20-year plan update, the interregional corridor system kind of fell off the radar a little bit in MINDOT's statewide plan. So we're happy to see that back. I think it's really good news to have that investment emphasis in the plan. Generally speaking, I think MINDOT has done a good job historically working towards performance measures, and I think this plan takes them one step forward to really integrating performance measures into their decision-making process about what projects they select. And I think that bodes well for all of us that they're getting their investments made at the right time, in the right place, and on the right roadway. So that's a very good thing, that they're making that complete step to just, to a little bit more than monitoring, but actually making their investments based on those performance measures. The letter that you have before you also stresses that we want to continue working with them and that we've had some successful partnerships, and we've been able to leverage some local money to help make that MINDOT funding pot go a little bit further, particularly on those safety projects and community priorities that we have. And the letter also emphasizes support from MINDOT's efforts to build statewide support for additional transportation funding to address those gaps that are in that plan. And we also focused in those comments and did a little bit of a plug for how we do our work here locally at the, through the scale effort to try to get our transportation investments aligned and to try to get each community thinking about how we can preserve those assets through our annual education program, which talks about decision-making and thinking about how development, that transportation, land use linkage, and economic development support that those investments make. So that's the focus in the comments in the letter. And if there are any other questions that you have of me, I'm not the MINDOT expert anymore, so if you have questions about the content of the presentation, I'll do my best to answer them, or I'll find out the answers for you.
Thank you, Lisa. Councilman Lehman.
The public versus MINDOT input slide in your presentation, it says the public leaned C and MINDOT leaned A. MINDOT actually leaned B.
Well, they did. This is actually their summary of it, and I think you're absolutely right because when I looked at this slide, I had the same conclusion, that they leaned towards the middle. But I think what, the point that they were trying to make is that, that as a whole, they had a little bit more of a focus on the asset management investment strategy.
So of the 45% of MINDOT input on B, the majority of that 45% was looking at asset management?
Well, if you go back, if you go back to their approach, they had traveler safety in there too as well. I think, I think the key takeaway from this, and you can, I'm not the expert who can explain what the MINDOT analysis was, is that they, if you look at this, the approach that they came out of, it's a little bit of a compromise approach, but if you look at Approach A and Approach C, you can see that in Approach A, most of the funding went towards asset management. Very little of the funding went into some of the categories where you see more of on Approach C, like the critical connections category, which is the interregional corridors and Twin Cities regional mobility. So in the B approach, they really scaled that back. They have some, but it's not nearly as much as in the Approach C, which was the approach that the public tended to support. So it's a balancing act here where MINDOT's looking at and being a steward for the assets that they have and said, "Well, we like that approach, but we really can't do that approach and still meet our performance targets and still meet the government accounting standards and keep our conditions up to maintain those assets in such a way that the state bond rating won't be affected." And so Approach B ended up being how they went.
So they are taking Approach B?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilwoman Whiting.
From a Scott County shockity position, wouldn't having a bigger slice of the pie, wouldn't it be better to have the critical connections for us? A little more slice than the asset management. Of course, you want to maintain your assets, but I think for this area, those critical connections, I think, would be more important for us.
Well, I certainly think that if there's an ability to raise additional funds, one of the things you might want to communicate to them is that that's a category you'd really like to see some of the additional funding be focused in because that is a very critical area for Scott County and the metro region. And in reality, communities that use the 169 corridor, we've learned through the 169 corridor coalition how important mobility through Scott County is for communities in Mankato and La Sure. The signals and us being able to remove those signals, one is a safety improvement for the county if we're able to grade-separate them. But secondly, they have tremendous benefit for the travel time and the reliability of folks' travel time as they travel from Mankato up to points in Scott County or even to the north, such as the airport or downtown Minneapolis. So those, those kinds of investments, yes, are probably the type of investments that we would like to be able, we would like them to be able to do more of.
But it is a balancing act, I understand.
Yes, it is.
One additional comment, Mayor and board members, if I may. Big picture, I mean, the questions are great, but really what you're seeing here in this study is there's a little bit of investment across the board in the first 10 years. They're really kind of finishing up some of the commitments that they've made and projects that are in the pipeline. The little bit scarier point is in the final 10 years or the back 10 years, you don't see any of those investments in mobility, very small investments in interregional corridors, and they really are pushing the vast, vast majority of their investments into the pavements and the preservation of the bridges and the pavements, and they're losing ground. The slide that was really busy showed that in every category, more and more and more of the infrastructure is moving into the poor category. And absent of additional funding, the system that you see today is going to be a lot older in the second 20 years.
Councilwoman Clay.
Yeah, this is depressing. When I'm looking at this, looking at 20 years, it seems like, what I'm seeing here is that we're going to be equally poor or in worse condition than we currently are. And that's, but there are some administrative Band-Aids that are going to be out there to help spread the pain more equally. But even in that scenario, that it's going to be equally bad or worse, on top of that, we're only probably looking at having 60 to 70% of the funding needed to make it equally bad or worse.
That's, is that a pretty fair assessment? That's exactly what you're seeing. The buying power goes down, and at that buying power, it makes it more and more difficult for them just to maintain the infrastructure that's there. And the point that we would like to make with that, we've been pretty successful using local dollars to leverage MINDOT projects. 169, 69 is a good example, the 101 River Bridge is another example. I think those opportunities, as we move forward, absent of new funding, are going to go away. That MINDOT piece of the conglomerate isn't going to be available to us.
You know, I have two more questions, Mayor.
Okay.
Did they take into consideration in their long-term planning any potential improvements in technologies for concrete and asphalt and these types of things? I'm assuming that they've got, you know, test strips all over the country where they do all these testings to improve these things, that get longer life out of them and so on, and better wear and so on and so forth. And I'm wondering if they included any of that into their long-term projections.
Councilman Lehman, that would be, probably be a better question for MINDOT. But in the, I've seen this presentation, I think tonight was my fourth time, so I've seen it enough times. In none of the presentations did they talk about the technology or the advancement of technology or whether or not the specifics of that made it into the plan.
Did you have another one, you said?
Well, it's just a comment, they seem to always be able to find the money to build stadiums and things like that. At least they could do is take care of their roads.
There you go.
Commissioner Wagner. Mitch, I know it's a real political football to ask this question, but in your opinion, to stop the hemorrhage, to maintain the system, in your opinion, what would the gasoline tax need to be raised to? And I, come on, you're nonpartisan.
I am not an expert in how much buying power, one penny or two penny or 10 cents would be on the gas tax. I just know what the study shows is if you don't change, you're going to lose ground. And so something is going to have to change. I don't, I don't think the gas tax by itself can be raised enough to buy your way, to be, to buy your way out of this. I mean, it'd have to be such a significant number that it's, it has to be a mix of things, and technology might be one of it.
But Mitch, the gas.
Less travel, working from home, transit, it has to be, you can't just fix one thing.
Mitch, the gas tax, in your opinion, would not be enough?
Well, if, I don't think you could sell enough. You couldn't get support for enough to meet the $12 billion shortfall that's here.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, to answer that a little bit, and maybe Lisa was in on this presentation on the I-35 thing, they talked about if it were double, that would get us closer, so. If that helps you out, double, yeah.
The one other comment on that too is that it's become a little less reliable in terms of its fundraising ability or revenue raising because people are working towards purchasing more fuel-efficient vehicles, and they're traveling less, using transit. And so all of those things impact that revenue source as well. So it's been producing less over the last decade, and that's expected to continue into the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
You know, it seems like, it seems like the problem's actually twofold now because we're taking, the government's taken money to spend on mass transit, which has taken money out of their gas tax to fund their roads. So they're spending on one hand, and in spending that money on mass transit, they're removing the money out of their other pocket that they would get from the gas tax.
They're reducing the wear on the roads.
So the question now is, where's that balance? Which one is, are they reducing enough of the wear and tear in the road with the amount they're putting into transportation to justify the transportation expenses?
All right, we have Resolution Number 7334 on our side of things. Entertainer motion for adopting a resolution. Councilman Lehman.
Motion to adopt 7334, letter of support with Scott County to MINDOT in their plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So anybody, Council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, same thing, Scott County. Is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Wagner and Commissioner Mendon seconded that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. With that, I don't think we have any other business, so we can't. There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.
Thank you, folks, and you guys are continuing on.
Thank you. I'll entertain a five-minute, Councilwoman Clay?
Ooh, are we in recess?
Do we have a second? Councilwoman Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in recess until 8:30. All right, we are back in session at 8:32, and we are going to move on to consent items, 3A, as well as if no one in council has issues, add 4C. Onto there as well. Mr. McNeil.
Thank you. There are two items under consent. One is the purchase of a police cruiser from the state bid contract, and the second would be 4C, and that's authorizing a cooperative agreement with Scott County for County Road 17 and 78 improvements.
All right, Councilwoman Whiting.
Move to approve the amended consent agenda.
Do we have a second? So, Councilwoman Clay, any discussion? Mr. McNeil, we don't need to read those again, do we? I'm back in run. Any discussion?
I would just note that the cruiser funding is coming from the agreement with the SNNC.
Yep, exactly, very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We're going to move down to item number 4E at this time, acceptance and resignation of Councilmember Pamela Sherman, Resolution 7335. Mr. McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted in the introduction, Councilmember Sherman has submitted her letter of resignation from the council. That would be effective at the close of the day on August 31st of 2013. That means there'll be about four months remaining on her unexpired term. Otherwise, that would go until the first Monday of January 2014, which would be January 6th. In doing some research, while it's not uncommon, it's not unheard of to have midterm resignations, actually in doing some research back, we found that since 1982, shockity has had five previous opportunities to fill a position during the middle of the term that ranged for reasons from an individual being elected to another office, to a change in personal circumstances, to a death of a council member. Last time that we've actually had a vacancy like this to fill was 11 years ago. The only formal action before you tonight is actually to adopt the resolution accepting the resignation of Pamela Sherman. However, we'd also like some discussion, some guidance from you as far as how to fill the position that will be existing as of September 1st. Um, right now, you can discuss this at any time, however, it's only the four remaining on the council after September first who could actually participate in that discussion. Um, first meeting in September, that you could probably take action would be September third, the normal Tuesday night meeting. For the pri, five previous vacancies, the councils then chose to advertise the vacancy, they took applications. In some cases, they had, uh, forms to fill out that had questions on policy issues and how that might work, a sort of a pre-test. Um, they did interviews and they made appointments from that. However, there is no prescribed legal, uh, requirement in terms of how to fill the vacancy. It's just that three out of four of you will have to choose a, uh, consensus, a successor. Uh, in the event of a tie, by state law, the mayor has the opportunity then to make the appointment. So, we'd like some discussion from you tonight. Do you want to advertise, and if so, how process on that? Secondly, if you don't want to advertise, do you have other ideas as to how you'd like to, uh, find a consensus?
Council Clay.
First of all, I want to be sure, since we're already talking a few months here, do we have to fill the vacancy?
Yes.
We do have to.
Councilman Lehman.
We're talking, what, ninety days, hundred-and-twenty days to the election?
Until the election?
From.
From that time, it'd be about sixty-five, somewhere in there, days, yes.
Uh, Gary Markey's seat, I believe, was less vacant until the general election, because it was a short period of time.
I don't recall the circumstances on that in terms of the amount of time, uh, the recommendation that we've had is that you need to take an action to fill, otherwise you've got a four-month vacancy.
Council Clay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not crazy about the idea of, of spending a lot of time and energy, especially now that we're going into the budget process. To find it, to publish, you know, and ask for applicants and then interview them and all that. That's a lot of time and effort for, you know, a, a short period of time. Um, I think, uh, a recent previous council member might be a good, you know, idea that they, they're already familiar with, and have, it hasn't been so long that they've forgotten how things work, and, um, someone like that could step in and fairly quickly get up to speed and, you know, be with us for a few months and, and then. Couple, couple of names come to mind, was, uh, Pat Heitzman and, and Steve Mendon.
Mm-hmm. But back to Councilman Lehman's point, do we let it go for two months and then after someone is elected, appoint that person as of the first meeting in November? Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, you, you have a lot of discretion on this. Uh, the statute does say it shall be filled by an appointment. Now, obviously, if it was a vacancy with thirty days left to go, you know, you may not, the statute requires you to do it in a reasonable period of time. I could do a little more checking to see if, uh, if the sense of the, the sense of the council is, do we really have to appoint anyone? Can we do it for, for, uh, four months? Let me know that, and I'll take a look at that.
Okay. Council Wadding?
Well, I kind of feel we should advertise and appoint someone. So I think that's, uh, it opens up an opportunity to appoint somebody who may not get elected, so look at a different, uh, section of town, um, person that, uh, may be a good fit, um, maybe, uh, replacing a woman, so a woman or a, someone with a different ethnic background or something like that, uh, I think that might be a good idea.
We also run in the, we don't want to appoint somebody who's going to be running for the position also. That'd be an unfair advantage to the other candidates running, assuming there's more than two.
Right.
Right. Councilman Lehman?
I guess I would, I would support either leaving the position vacant until the election and then appointing whoever happens to get elected in the open seat, or bringing on a past council member, Heitzman or Mendon or somebody, if we have to appoint somebody. Until after the election, then we can appoint that person.
So you're saying, well, whoever we would appoint would go through the end of December?
Okay.
But, Council Wadding?
You're saying that they would, they'd have to not be running for the seat?
Right. If we can't just leave it open until November seventh.
Well, I think we can.
Well, Mr., you can't leave it open, the person who gets elected on November seventh cannot take office until the first Monday in January. That's when that term begins. If what you're saying is, should we wait to see who gets elected and appoint that person for the balance of the term? Uh, that's a possibility. That would, you could do that. I mean, it'd mean you'd be roughly two months with only four council members, but that's a possibility. Sixty days, that's not your call, but yes, you can do that.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I like either of those two options. One, um, getting someone in who has some experience, so we're not starting from, uh, the ground floor, going through the budget process, because I don't think that it makes a lot of sense for whoever would be coming in or for us trying to get the job done that we need to, um, or, um, holding off until we have an election on the fifth of November, and then we have a meeting on the sixth, and we could appoint, and then they would take o, office as the appointment, finishing out Council Sherman's position, and then they would take office officially for their term on January one.
The other option would be just to not accept Pamela's resignation.
That is an option. I don't think that's going to be good for anyone, however.
If there's, if there's two open
Right.
seats and then two can, or two new people, then do we appoint the person who got the most votes of the two?
Hmm, that's a good question.
Keep it going.
That's why I like just appointing somebody who's previously been on the council, it just seems so much simpler and cleaner and.
I'm on board with that, and letting him finish out the term.
If we can find somebody who accepts the job.
If we can find somebody, right, um, and we don't, uh, so basically what I think we should do, with that being said, um, because I hadn't thought about the fact that there are two open seats, that, um, that's the way that moves, uh, that if we, um, accept applications the end of August.
I'd rather not accept applications, I'd rather just appoint somebody.
Okay.
Going back to my first thought was, you know,
Right.
it's a lot of, it's going to be a lot of work and to go through that process, when I'd rather be spending the time concentrating on the budget.
So you're taking this project on, is that what you're saying?
Finding someone?
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
I'll join him.
No, no, I'll do it alone.
Past council member and ain't running for office this cycle.
Yeah.
Okay. Um,
Right.
I, I don't have a problem with, um, folks that have been on commissions and know what's going on.
Yeah.
As well, uh, because, I mean, our budget process is a little bit different, as I understand. And listening to you two whine last year, going through the budget process.
Which two?
I, 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 I'll, I'll leave that open.
I don't know what two.
Um, but, uh, but the budget process is, I mean, just people who are familiar enough with what's going on, I, I have no problem with that. So, somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have just one comment if I can.
Please.
Uh, I know you don't want to go through the formal application process, but whatever criteria you set up, let's assume it's, uh, we're going to appoint someone who's a past council member, just so it's, you know, you might want to have staff find out who they are and con, and have them contacted to see if they're interested in it, and rather than selectively picking one, uh, you probably want to, so, it wouldn't be an application, but whatever criteria you put forward, you should contact those people that fit that criteria and see how many were interested, and then you can make your choice from there.
Councilman Lehman?
Make a motion directing staff to contact sta, past council members, um, to see if they're interested in filling out Pamela Punt Sherman's term.
At least he didn't call you the late Pamela Punt.
Um, with the caveat that they're not seeking office in this election cycle. And bring back a list of those interested and available.
To our next meeting?
To our meeting in September.
Just wait for a second.
Well, that gives staff some time, and Pamela's here till then anyway. Or, yeah. Whatever. For convenience.
All right, so could you restate that motion a little bit?
Second meeting in August.
Could you restate that motion?
Direct staff to contact past council members for the city of Shakopee to fill a vacancy coming up from the resignation of Pamela Sherman. That they're not seeking office in the next general election, and bring it back a list of those eli, uh, those that are, uh,
Interested.
Interested.
Interested at our second meeting in August.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilman Clay, any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering if we can get some parameters on that. I can think of council members who have been off the council for more than twenty years, who under this motion would be eligible, and I'd really be concerned about missing somebody in terms of they might be interested, but, um, I don't know that that's what you may have had in mind in terms of recent experience.
Past ten years, past eight years?
Past ten years. Um, yeah, twelve.
Better go twelve.
All right.
Twelve?
Twelve.
You just wanted to be council members? I can think of another elected official.
I'll start with council members and.
Okay.
We'll see where the list goes from there.
Yeah.
Um, or if anybody's up for it from there. Um, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to one with Council Wadding in dissent.
I'm abstaining.
Yes, you got that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And abstention. Thank you.
Three to one with one abstention.
Uh, Council Clay?
And it is with great regret that I would offer resolution seventy-three thirty-five, accepting the resignation of Pamela J. Sherman from Shakopee City Council.
Do we have a second?
Second, Matt.
Oh, should've died for lack of a second.
Should've died for lack of a second. Most of my motions do anyway.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Abstention?
Abstain.
Abstain, uh, passes three to one with Councilman Lehman in dissent with an abstention, um.
That'd be two, no, okay, got it.
We okay?
Yeah.
All right. Would you like to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Actually, I would love you to speak, a speech.
A speech?
Please.
Um, of course, my resignation letter was in your packet, and, um, anyone at home could certainly look at that on the website as well. And I do, um, regret that I have to leave a few months early, however, it just seems like the right decision for this body and for this city to have someone that would be dependable over the course of the coming four months. Um, as my husband and I are expecting twins at Thanksgiving time, so. Um, but it has absolutely been my honor to serve on this body with you all as my colleagues, um, work with the city staff, um, getting to know you and learning so much from your experience and just really gaining something, um, you know, i- in terms of life experience that I would recommend to anyone to participate and, um, learn about their civic duties and, um, it's been an honor to serve the city and the citizens of Shakopee, so thank you for allowing that, me that opportunity, I, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're here.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I guess I would, on behalf of the city council, I'd like to say thanks for your service to the community, we appreciate it, you've done a fine job. Uh, we'll miss you, and, uh, please stop back with the babies when they're all able and show us the happy family.
I will, thank you.
Very much so.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks.
Um, all right, uh, with that, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Uh, we're going to move on to item four D one, capital improvement program twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen, and consideration of poli, policy changes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we started budget discussions last month, we discussed the issues of focusing on capital, capital projects, capital improvements. I think you saw in the discussion earlier this evening, this is a real time of transition for Shakopee. You're going to have a lot of decisions to make, not just on economic development, but the impact those development projects will have on your community, whether it's your infrastructure, your parks, your community amenities, how you're going to move people throughout the area, and the coordination of these projects as well as the funding. When we discussed the capital plan this year, one of the factors that was really apparent to Mr. Looney and Ms. Polly and myself and other staff members, this is an extraordinarily difficult time to put out a five and ten-year plan on anything. It's a very, very unique time. What we're presenting this evening is the fourteen, fifteen years, because those are the periods that we feel at this point are the most critical for the planning and the presentation. And Ms. Polly will be the first to, uh, go, come forward tonight with the park reserve. She'll go through the details on the projects that they are reviewing and go through the, uh, details of each project, and then followed by Mr. Looney, who will be talking about the infrastructure, public works plans, but then also a couple of policy decisions that staff will be moving forward on as we feel these are pretty critical to the future needs of the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, here tonight to present to you the park reserve fund, uh, for twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen, and what we see, um, as potential revenue coming in and potential projects that we have planned to keep moving forward on. Um, at the end of twenty-twelve, we had a balance in the park reserve of about, of about one-point-seven million. Uh, so we were able to move forward, I'm sorry, at the end of twenty-thirteen, we had a balance of one-point-four million. Um, and that is with an extensive amount of, uh, park dedication fees coming in this year. We had about a million dollars in park dedication fees coming in this year. So it's been a very, um, good year for the park reserve, but it's allowed us to get some projects done that have been on hold for quite some time. So just going through what we have planned for twenty-fourteen, um, then we, I can ask, answer any questions about what we're currently doing in twenty-thirteen as projects moving forward. Um, but then any questions on future projects that you might have? So, uh, to start with, as you'll see in our twenty-fourteen budget, uh, we have a couple of housekeeping items that are carryover from year to year. This one in particular is our very first one, it's just showing that we are going to be getting a twenty-thousand-dollar revenue coming in for the project we previously completed in twenty-twelve, which was the installation of lights at the soccer, or sports complex. Um, and this is a three-year, whoa, I lost it, three-year commitment, um, from the soccer association at twenty-thousand dollars over three years. So our last of the twenty-thousand-dollar installment will come in in twenty-fourteen. Um, the next project that, um, is a project that we would like to move forward with in twenty-fourteen, and you will actually see at your next meeting, um, to go ahead with the final design of, is the development of our parcel seventy-five dog park. We also do have a recommendation from the park board for a name for this park that you will see at your next meeting, so then I can take off the description of the parcel, and we can get that des, development sign up on the parcel that says future development of, um, the park. So, with that, um, in twenty-thirteen, we would like to go to final design and some site work, and I have the descriptions in below um, that we will be looking at, clearing some of the invasive species on the site, because we have some buckthorn where we'll need to put the trails in. But then actually, the big construction will be in twenty-fourteen, where, where we will actually install the fencing, um, for the off-leash doggy area, paved trails as where, as well as woodchip trails, the hockey rink, warming house, parking lot, um, and then a pleasure skating area, and as well, maybe a picnic shelter, restroom area. That will all come in the final design as to actually what amenities will be at this park, but our concept plan included those.
Councilman Lehman?
The, uh, lease for the two acres on the north for MinDOT?
Yep.
Is that, uh, what, what's going to be on that portion?
It's going to be an extension of the dog park. Um, the fencing just goes further north as well as a woodchip trail, and then our paved trail extends along the exterior of that, so you'll see that at your next meeting as well.
Is that going to be a long-term, like a ninety-nine-year lease for that amount, or?
It's going to be a long-term lease, um, and there is a. It's gonna be a long-term lease, um, and there is a fee per year that we will have to pay, um, for that. I believe it's right now five hundred dollars per year for the lease of that land. Um, but from my talkings with Mindot, um, they're actually putting the lease together right now. I have a draft of it that I'll be sending over to our city attorney here shortly, um, but it does look long-term, whether they need the land. Right now, they've retained that five acres for future potential, um, ponding and overflow for one sixty-nine, but from what I, my conversation is with them, it's going to be a fairly long-term lease. They really don't see any need for that in the near future.
Can we try to persuade them that we'll do the maintenance on that property for them free of charge for a, a lower lease?
A lower fee?
Yep.
I can run it pa-
Or beyond the property anyway.
I can run it past my contact and see what, what they say and, and bring that back to, yeah.
Council Wyding?
Wasn't the discussion about the, the Mindot property so we could utilize their fence and not have to build a fence line? Are we still gonna have to build that fence in there?
We will still build, I believe, the fence, because we want our, our paved trail to go on the exterior of that fence. Um, and if we were to go beyond the fence that's currently in place, we'd be going into Mindot right away and too close to one sixty-nine. So we would still probably include our own fence, um, to allow, and that's, and that'll come in final design, so we're not to that exact point yet. Um, and that'll come forward to the park board and to the city council before we actually go to build anything. Um, but the idea is that if we put our ex- our paved trail all the way around the exterior of the dog park, um, and then throughout the whole, I don't have a good blow-up of it right now, but the whole perimeter of parcel seventy-five, that it's a larger loop for people to walk that, and then that would be where you don't have a dog or you do have a dog on a leash. That would be outside of the off-leash dog area, but it would still be in that property, so. Uh, we'll keep that in mind though as we're doing the design of how, how we can best incorporate and keep our costs lower. Next one? Um, so that's a big project for twenty fourteen. Uh, the next project that we have right now for twenty fourteen, and this is, um, something that we continue to work on, but this is, uh, ten acres that's actually on the school, high school campus. Um, it's on the corner of Seventeenth Avenue and Spencer right now, and this is very preliminary. It's been talking with the school district over the past year of what they're gonna do with this ten acres. Um, the, we have talked, uh, with, uh, Mr. Jenke and with superintendent just to try to see what their, their thoughts are of the use of this property. Um, are, we were gonna try to do something in this twenty thirteen, however, with the school district deciding what they're going to do with their schooling situation and their numbers and then their athletic facilities, we've moved this to twenty fourteen, um, with the potential that if they don't decide to use this ten acres for, you know, a different school building or a future stadium or anything else that the school needs, that we would do a joint project with the school district to add three turf fields, um, not a synthetic turf, but actual just grass turf, um, and light at least two of them. And then we'd have, because our field space is such a shortage in the city that we're finding with the growth of our athletic assoc- association, um, we have had a verbal commitment so far from the, the football association and the soccer association that if we were to develop this site, that they would give money towards those lights again as they did for the sports complex. So this is something that we will continue to negotiate. It will be updated as the school district decides what can and can't be done with this property. Maybe we don't do a joint project specifically at this property and with whatever comes out of their, um, vote in next year when they call that they're gonna have an election, you know, maybe we do it at a different site, but do some sort of a joint project with the school district to be able to add fields to the community.
Are these lacrosse sites or how?
They would be lacrosse. They'd be able to fit soccer, lacrosse, football, um, and then anything new that might come about, but yes. Another one for twenty fourteen and beyond is, um, for Huber Park. We are currently, uh, this year, the electricity was upgraded in Huber Park, um, as a result of a, the Derby Days requesting that, but also as it would help our, um, band shell and a future shelter that we're gonna put in next year. So twenty fourteen, we have ninety thousand in there for a thirty-five by, or thirty-six by fifty, actually, sorry, thirty-eight by fifty, um, shelter that's gonna go just the west of the playground area. It's gonna resemble the band shell as well as the building. Our Public Works Parks Department will be building the shelter, um, when they have time within their schedule to do so. This year, we're getting it designed, so the total cost of the shelter that you saw last year was a hundred thousand. Ten thousand is going towards design and, and anything that we can get completed this year and then the actual construction. Then we have in twenty sixteen, which I know we're talking twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, but as long as it's in front of you, twenty sixteen, a small, uh, just a picnic shelter that was planned with the actual development of the park back in two thousand and five, six, in two thousand and seven when it's completed. This is where electricity is already stubbed to the east of the playground, um, over by the overflow parking lot. We have a pad, that's pad-ready for just a small, little picnic shelter that we will probably put in there. Um, then, large project that, um, you will see coming forward as we move forward, um, with our park reserve, CIP, and as park dedication fees come in, is the construction and dev- design, final design and construction of Corey Lake Park. Um, this year, we are getting our public access. We are pretty sure that it is coming with the improvement of the public road for the Emerson site that's coming in to that building. Uh, so we are excited about the public access portion that allows us to now apply for grants again for this project in the future. So the public access will be built this year. The park, so construction will not take place until twenty fifteen as it's planned. Um, in twenty fourteen, we will take a year to try to get the design, uh, done, final design, anything that we need as far as grant writing to get some grants for this project again like we had back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six. Um, and actually get this park to be a very unique park, because it's, it's going to be unique for the city with the trail connections that it has, plus the lake and that sort of thing. So, design in twenty fourteen, construction in twenty fifteen is the anticipated plan, along with the road construction this year. Um, next is the, uh, addition of paved parking lot to Riverview Parks. Riverview Park is our one lone baseball diamond that we have over, um, on Harrison Street. It's had a gravel parking lot for many, many years, and it's been on our CIP to pave it. So the plan is to pave it next year, um, and have that be a more, um, we've done some upgrades to the field. The baseball association built dugout roofs and stuff this year, so, uh, we are working towards getting that field a little bit nicer.
This one's on the table.
Did you guys find it?
I have it.
It was World Public Works, sorry.
We're missing that one.
Yeah, I don't have that one.
It was on the screen.
That's it?
No.
I can give you a copy too, Matt, Mr. Lehman. Um, then the next one, I'll move on to twenty fifteen, is top of park improvements. Um, we are looking at possibly constructing two more fields on the ten acres that is west of our main field, um, and then light field seven and eight. So this is in our capital improvement program. We also have some items in twenty fifteen in our park asset fund that would do, uh, be, being extended of the fencing on our four fields at five through eight to make those a little bit bigger, so we would do all the overhaul of these fields in one year, along with adding two new baseball fields. And this is contingent upon whether or not we work with the school district on a joint turf project, because it hasn't been officially decided what we would do with that ten acres, but if we did a joint turf project elsewhere, we would make these the baseball fields. And that was discussed last year, so. Um, last two, or the last one that I have is to pave in twenty fifteen, um, the parking lot at Lake O'Dowd Park. Right now, it's a gravel parking lot. It's starting to get more use, uh, with the pier that's there, the trail that's there. We've had a group come every, um, spring to do a, actually, I shouldn't say spring, late winter, because they still need ice, but to do a charity golf, uh, ice golf tournament on Lake O'Dowd that they use our park for, and they help clean it up, and they plow for us and that sort of thing. So it's a good joint project, but we'd actually like to pave that parking lot. It's a smaller parking lot.
Council Lehman?
The bolt launch one is already paved. Is this the one on the north corner of the lake?
It is.
Okay.
Yes. So that is the projects we have planned for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. I believe in your packet, you did have the kind of overview for twenty fourteen where you saw the balance at the end of twenty thirteen at one point four, um, and then the projects coming in. We still have a balance at twenty fourteen to move up forward with some projects in twenty fifteen and beyond, so. And that's anticip- we anticipate more park dedication come in, but what we have coming in and showing is pretty confident or has already been received, that that is what we have coming in, so it's pretty accurate to date.
Sheet must've been on the one that was on the table, right?
I'm not sure that one was included for some reason.
Was this one?
The one that you have on the screen.
No.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, it looks great. Very nice job. This is exciting. We have park dedication coming in again, and it, uh, it helps actually get projects done, so, uh, that is very exciting, so, thank you very much.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Looney.
Thank you, Jamie. And, uh, I believe you have this in your packet, the park asset fund. You just showed the first two in the next two years, and, uh, just wanted to highlight the, uh, major project, the Lions tennis courts. Uh, there's four existing tennis courts over there. They're in rough shape. It's been planned to be replaced for, I actually, I think, at least the last three years, I know we've talked about it, and then, uh, we are looking at going from four to two and making an ADA accessible, uh, parking lot. That's what we're looking at. Um, the ca- uh, the other big one, a hundred thousand, is a community center lift replacement. Is that the lift to the?
It's track.
To the track, so that's being, that's needs to be replaced. And the other big one in twenty fifteen is Schlepper Field Lights at the baseball stadium. Those lights are on a kind of a trust tower. They need to be repainted or, and the cost of repainting, that's what we're trying to get a good handle on, the cost of repainting might be such that it might be better for us to replace the lights. Some of the lights are not in the correct position, uh, so that'd give us an opportunity to make some improvements. We need to do a little more investigation of that cost. It might be a little high right now, but we're trying to fine-tune that. But that's, those are the lists. The other projects in there are somewhat very similar, trail overlays, fence replacements, you know, a few things here and there in our park asset that need, that come up. We use the GIS system to identify which projects do come up, then we do an inspect- inspection of those to see if they're, yes, warranted to be replaced or not. And then we put them in the right year category where we should go. So if there's no question on that, that, we have built up some funds, quite a bit of funds in there.
Council Wyding?
Those, uh, light, light poles, aren't those the old historic ones from the ballpark across the, the river?
I believe so, yes.
Be nice to be able to save those if it was something we could do.
We'll get to the cost of repainting. You'll be surprised how expensive, because it is a trust-type tower to repaint all that. That's gonna probably all have to be hand-sanded and hand-painted, I guess. And there are quite a few lights there. But not the modern-day lights.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, some of my, uh, slides did not make the, uh, your packet, so I did put a PowerPoint presentation. And I think it's coming up here. Nope. Doesn't wanna come. Have to drag it over? Yeah. Doesn't wanna let me go on. There it is.
Okay.
Got it?
Okay.
Had it click out on somebody's thing. Okay, we'll go through this quite rapidly. I think it's moving there. What we do is review all our projects in the past and look at all our acts, assets management reports, and look at our system to develop. We have about a hundred fifty-five miles of streets. This is from last year. Um, we try to balance our costs, looking at our CIP to kinda get good project, you know, good projects that are fairly balanced, so we get good volume pricing, and we try to maintain a certain level of our payment management condition. Sanitary sewer projects, we're looking at one more year of cured-in-place pipe lining project, mainly in the presidential streets. The ones that aren't being recon, we can, we can line those pipes. And another project, it's in the sewer fund, but it's really, um, we've had a petition from, uh, the, uh, property owners in Hildale Drive. Dakota Crossings is coming in. They'll bring sewer and water to this site, and then we'll reconstruct Hildale Drive and put sewer and water in their, their existing septic and well. Question?
Council Lehman?
Will that fall under the new policy change of the timeline that they have to hook up to this now?
Um, our new policy, I mean, we still, it's still on the books, is three years. The city code is three years to hook up.
So now we're putting, uh, services in, but they've got three years now, once we put this in, to hook up to the system. Are they aware of that?
Yes, they will. We've had meetings with the residents before. We've given them information, yeah.
Did we give them that information?
Hmm?
Did we give them that information?
Yes.
Okay.
We've had, at least to the owners that have been at the meeting. Some people have not shown, but this is a very small area. There's only ten property owners. Uh, they've all been talking. We will have additional meetings with them, but they're the ones who petitioned us. Uh, this is another one, L sixteen, the old building, just tear it down. We need to do that. Million-dollar trunk extension at some point, uh, once the interchange is built, we see that happening. Um, this is a policy issue I'd like to talk to you more about, is that we've lined several sewer mains, and there are services that are not lined but are fairly old. A lot of cities have done a policy or a program where they go in and line the services, which you can do without disrupting the street. I'll talk to you more about that. And this is a map showing where we have lined these areas here, like for instance, Shakopee Avenue. Those services are the, they went in around nineteen fifty-nine, nineteen sixty, so those services are fifty years old or more. Some of them could be Orangeburg. So one of the things we'll like to talk to you more about, and I'll bring that back once I get through everything. And this is a project potentially replacing the forest main. This is listed as future. We're doing some improvements, which you authorized previously on L sixteen. We think we can get most of this done in, by some time. Now the street improvements, overlay project for next year, the big one will be Eagle Creek Boulevard and Saracen Street. Um, and then there's some other streets in other areas. The recon project, three point nine million, is bigger than this year's project. We scaled it back a little bit. We were able to take some of the streets off, but the other streets need to kinda work together because of the storm sewer system in this area, and you had a petition from Market Street, and you had a petition from Afgar, and I know the people in Scott also want that.
Bruce, why did we take some of the streets off?
We took some of the other streets off so we can par down this. This is getting pretty big.
Yeah.
This is a big project. This is bigger than this year's project. And then, Verling and Marshall, we'll have plans coming to you soon, um, in the next few months, and going out for bids and that'll, to take care of that intersection. I do have a big drawing here, but trail on one oh one, go underneath the bridge. Um, we do have some cultural issues that we have to work through with the state historicals, um, officer and the Minnesota State Historical. And once we get through that and our also local Indian tribe, then we can probably build this trail, which I think will be very nice, because it'll go around some cultural areas for people to see historical monuments and some natural resources, as well as a safety. People have, can now go, instead of going crossing at this, can't get it to show up here. This intersection right here, which is about fifty-five miles an hour, people have the option to go into the park underneath the bridge.
Will that trail connect to anything?
Yes.
To the east or south?
Um, hold on. Well, the, in two thousand and fourteen, the county is building that one oh one trail, and that's coming all the way to the bridge. So this trail can loop around, connect in- So this trail can loop around, connect into that, go into town, or go over here, or come into the park.
The south side of the?
This one?
Yes.
This connects into Saracen Street. There's a trail along here.
Okay.
And then this is a petition that we think we're gonna receive from Shenandoah Business Park. Again, they're getting inquiries on their property, but it's not pad ready. They want to know if the city would support an assessment project where they can bring sewer and water and streets in. Then they can have a better chance of bringing in industrial users. Twenty fifteen, this is the overlay project. Fuller Street is the big one here by the community center. The recon is much smaller. This is those streets we took off in order to make room for Market Street. And County Road seventeen, that would be this next phase, all the way to the interchange on forty-two and fifteen. One item here I want you to be aware of, I don't know if you can see this very well, but this is Valley Creek Crossing, Jennifer Lane. Here's Wood Duck Trail in here. We've got a lot of long streets with no, just one way in and out. It's always been a goal to make a connecting road system in here so that there's more than one way in and out of here. Also, the Wood Duck and Lakefield Drive, people could take another way out versus trying to make this left turn on Marshall Road, which will get busier and busier. The county will be able to have excess funds, they believe, to build this road, we think. We're working on this. Question is, do we bring sewer and water in this area? So we're gonna have to have several meetings with residents in that area. We've had some. This might come before you in the next few months in two thousand fourteen, just so you're aware.
Council Layman?
Will Jennifer Lane then hook up to seventy-eight?
Yes, it already does.
Okay. And then a second thought would be, at a minimum, do we put water and sewer mains just in the road as a minimum, and then at a future date, if they want, they can pay from the house to the main? So there's, the selling point there for us is to say, if they opt to do it now, then we'll go up to the property line. They pay from the property line to the, to the house. If they wait, they're gonna have to pay the, from the, from the house to the main.
I think the real issue, Council Layman, and members of council, will be, does the city front the utilities in here, defer the assessments to when they redevelop while we're getting the county to build a street in here? The benefit of that is we get a street system that connects these long cul-de-sacs and provides some emergency, another emergency area to drive in here. So that's gonna be the issue, because they're gonna be faced with some large assessments. The only way to recoup that, unless you're really rich, is to subdivide. But that's just an area that's, I just wanted you to be aware of. This could come at you. Reclamation, why not acres? Reclamation project is to grind up the existing pavement, leave it in place. The rural section, we can pave over that. We did, we did replace the streets in here earlier, Twenty-Ninth Avenue and Marcio Lane. And then also Hilldale Drive, not Hilldale, Hillside. Hilldale is the one with the sewer and water. This is Hillside. This is in rough shape. We will like to do this in this year after the county has done reconstructing. They're gonna, actually, the counties are gonna reconstruct this leg right here with the seventeen project. Connection of Burling Drive, you heard earlier that MINDOT funding might be short. You know, that's probably true, but I'll keep trying. And we're going out to get an appraisal for some of the parcel here, and then MINDOT will sit down with an agreement on the land value and get that taken care of. Then I think it's incumbent on us in two thousand fourteen to do some planning. What do we want to do with this? Two thousand fifteen, we probably could have a project. This is one might be of interest. There's no trail out here in this industrial park. We talked about data card and a thousand employees. Here's a trail. We have a big sewer and water easement on the south side of Twelfth Avenue. Then somehow to get in here, make this connection up to the connection, we're doing a valley park in the center, which then would go into Quarry Lake. So we're showing that as a big connection.
With that, Bruce, what about the bridge to get across to the south? Is that still in a long-term thought process?
Well, when I've applied for a bridge over here to connect up the south bridge, we don't have enough regional points. This is where the county and their regional plan for trails. And then we have a regi, let's say we get a regional facility now. We build up Quarry Lake, Prairie Lake Ski. You know, we have some regional points, as they say, to help us qualify better for a potential bridge. We did have a bridge designed, halfwayed design, that we could come across here, which connects to this Dean Lake Trail in this neighborhood. But that's something, until we get some more regional things in there, it's not, it's not gonna go very far.
Okay, thank you.
Does the dog park count as a, as a point on the south side?
Maybe a quarter point. And not, it won't count much. Then storm sewer, we do, we usually find an annual project just to clean up that we don't know about. Here's an outlet that we may need with the Shenandoah and Business Park. If they develop, we're gonna have to have an improved outlet to the Minnesota River through Three Rivers Park. We'll have to work with them. We would like to, one of the things here we're taking care of with the seventy-eight project and seventeen, they've torn down a house. We're gonna build a big pond. We've always had a drainage problem right here in Terry Yosa's house, and we don't have a drainage easement there. So we'll be able to fix that problem, but this is a, a natural channel in a conservation easement. It's still prone to erosion. We might want to put a low-flow pipe in there to, and not disturb the channel. We're looking at direct, a direct bore underneath the channel to do this. So that's something we're gonna look at. This one here, Watershed District, channel improvement through the Randy Naker, and also Steve Mullinhardt property. These are contributions that we would have to do in order to make that happen. We'd like to increase some more water capacity in this area. If you go by this area, there's, there's quite a bit of water in here. We've cut off the flow from the channel, the Prairie Lake Channel, but we have a huge groundwater flow that comes in here. And that fills it up. But it seems to maintain a certain level. It's either soaking in or evaporating, so.
Where's this at?
Our, our trail that we put in last year is still high and dry.
It's eighteen.
It's eighteen, I know.
Okay? So that's something that we might want to do as a water quality improvement. And then we have four big outlets to the Minnesota River that it would not have any treatment. One of the things, I'll be coming back probably August twentieth, a proposal to look at that. We're gonna get hit up with some requirement from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. It's coming down the pike, and one of the things we're gonna have to look at is how do we're gonna reduce twenty-five percent of the phosphorus loading in this area? We'll have to look at some major pollution control devices. We do have a healthy storm drainage fund, so that's why I was looking at these. Just wanna show, we'll get into concrete alleys here?
Hold on, Bruce.
Questions?
Would that be ponding issues down in that area, or would?
No.
For phosphorus or?
Well, we'd have to tear out a block of buildings in order to do a pond. We would be looking at some underground big structures, probably even some kind of treatment facility inside it.
And the phosphorus is coming from people's lawns?
Just runoff?
Well, for instance, down at, let's say, the old treatment site, we have a big, where the RV park is, there's some area there that we could put a structure in there, basically to capture some of the pollutants. Might even have to put in some treatment cells, sand filters, or whatever the case may be. The big emphasis is to reduce phosphorus. How do we capture that phosphorus? So we'd have to look at each area, like Fuller Street, that's another big one. Well, maybe we dig up the parking lot that we have, put a cell in there, and then repave it afterwards. I mean, we could put a pond there, but then you lose the parking. What we're gonna be looking at is some big cells underneath the street, parking lot, or an area that we can get into.
Where does the phosphorus come from?
Some of it's naturally occurring in soils.
Most of it's actually naturally occurring. It's just from the runoff from the soil is where most of it comes from. A lot of it.
So it's treatment plants.
Yeah, and it's tough to get around the requirements. I think I can go through. The policy issues now? Yep. Julie and I met, we looked at, you know, our funds that we have, and they're pretty healthy for storm and sanitary. One of the items we have is the concrete alleys that we looked at. We've got a lot of alleys and I don't know how to go back to. Been a while since I've been up here. I think you hit this. There we go.
Nice job, Bruce.
All right, those are alleys. We have eleven miles of alleys. And the ones, most of them are paved, are in the downtown. There's a good reason for that. Our policy is, in residential areas, you have to have a hundred percent petition, a hundred percent assessed. A lot of people might, would like to probably pave their alley or do something, but you can't get, very seldom can you get a hundred percent partition, participation. In the downtown, the central business district, the policy for the city in the years past has been to twenty-five percent assessed, and no requirement of petition. So there, that's why you see more paved alleys in the downtown area. In this area, this whole area, this is the old Shakopee Platte. You have a lot, all the lots there, there are no easements on any of the lot lines. Like we have in the newer plants, you see we have drainage easements. There's none here. The only way to convey water is the alleyway. And a lot of the flow goes north, or south to north here. These east-to-west alleys, a lot of the water will flow out of that alley into someone's yard. And many of the alleys are very flat. They don't drain very well. In fact, I have a video here, if you wanted to see it, that a resident sent me, said wanted the council to see what a poor-conditioned alley is.
Go for it.
But, well, that might take a more challenge here.
All right, then don't worry about it.
We're gonna go for that, but. Yeah, we can send you that. But the, the policy issue that with the council, I mean, some cities have done this, Richfield and Hopkins, and basically you're using the concrete alleys as your drainage way. And we might have to extend storm sewer into some of these concrete alleys in order to really pick up the water, because we can't get it to the street. But if we can get it to the street, we would. It's like a big gutter, and it, it transmits the water from the main, from anything that gets into the alleyway. If you look at the water going south to north, or even west to east, whatever, it collects it as a gutter, drains it to a storm drain or the street, and gets it out. So we're looking at that, that we could look at our storm drainage funds and probably pick up seventy-five percent. I mean, this is just an idea. One of the things I would like to do is a feasibility study to look at the program, what the actual percentage of policy would be, how much assessment, how much storm drainage, you know, what would be the right combination. Right now, we think twenty-five percent assessed. You'd probably get, based on a fifty, sixty thousand per block alley, it'd be around fifteen hundred to two thousand per lot, and the rest would be picked up out of storm drainage. That's kind of a program we could look at. Do we need to do all eleven miles? Or how do you want to view the city? This is kind of a policy direction that we would need from the council. Where would you like to go on something like this? You do experimental, a couple alleys. We do have some problem alleys that need to be fixed. And do, but do you want to do a bigger program?
Council Layman?
Maybe the first, what I did is, in my mind, I kind of looked at my alley. And in my, my area of town, the water, there, all yards are sloped from the south to the north. And the alley runs east to west. And I guess the concern that pops to mind is the, the folks on the north side of the block of that alley would receive no benefit because their water from the alley down to Seventh all goes north. So it wouldn't be possible for them to get their water into that alley because their yard is sloped away from it.
Well, they wouldn't get the water from the people up the street. That's the benefit. They don't get the water from.
And then the next question would be, would it be on a neighborhood petition basis, or how would we do that?
Well, I don't know if we can answer all those questions tonight.
Okay.
You know, we don't have, I mean, I'm looking at if we did anything, we'd do some kind of feasibility study, or some report, come back and get more input. I don't think we can, we're not gonna get everything. Is there interest in the council to pursue this? And that would be the only thing I'd be wanting from you tonight. And we would come back, probably wouldn't even build, do any alleys in two thousand fourteen. We'd be, we'd have to get this program in place, and then we'd be looking at a two thousand fifteen project if we went forward. So that's kind of what I'm looking at.
I have one of these alleys.
I know you do.
So if they are, and you're talking concrete as opposed to asphalt?
Yes, I think you're.
So garbage trucks would be able to go through all, any time of the year? My other question is, well, two, can I sign up now? And three, how much more would it cost to put in those electrical or heating tubes in the concrete so it melts the ice off in the, in the winter?
We'll have to research that. I mean, I think there's enough interest if you talk to a lot of people. The problem is, if it's a hundred percent petition, a hundred percent assessed, we don't get any, we don't get too far.
Council Wyden?
I see the definite value with the downtown blocks and commerce and things, and some of the, some of the pothole issues we have currently with the paved alleys, and definitely need to maintain them, what we have. And, and the, moving the water away from some of those older buildings, I think is an important thing to do.
Council Layman?
I do think there are some alleys in town that could definitely benefit from some type of alternative to what we currently have, policy. The one up on South of Tenth, Tenth and Dakota, there was some issues up there. Staff, I know staff worked on that one for a while. You know, so I'm sure there's a lot of spot locations that would definitely benefit from something like this, so. I'm more.
And this, yeah, and this would probably be, if we did go ahead, I mean, a ten to twelve-year program. Because, I mean, doing a mile of alley would be a huge project, but that's how long it would take.
Yeah, I don't have a problem at all with where it's necessary.
All right.
To go forward. Is there consensus on that?
Yeah, I don't think I would support just a blanket, do them all. I think I would just kind of take a look at the problem areas.
Prioritize it based on a series of criteria.
Council Sherman?
Okay, and then, second policy question. Showed you a slide earlier. We have lined a certain number of sewer mains because of their condition where we could line it without having to dig up the main. That's great. We saved the main. And you've heard from other residents, Bob Schmidt for one, what the cost is to replace a service if it goes bad in the street, anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand. We can line these services, if they're lineable, probably in a large enough scale project, to thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred per service. Then we don't have to dig, you know, you'd probably dig up by the property line, you're able to slip in a liner from the main, get everything protected. So then you get a lifespan, another additional fifty years. Some of the services that we've, on the mains that we've lined are over forty to fifty years old. So some of them might be orange bird. We don't know, until we did some tele, more televising of the service line to find out. Some cities, I know Hastings has done this, Idina, other cities have done it where they've gone in and lined the service line. And they've done a program. I know, he's one of our, he's a, one of our consultants. He's a guy I've worked with, quite a bit on our, on our Minnesota Public Works Association Education Committee, but he's an expert. He's done a lot of these types of projects. One of the things I think we should look at is a feasibility study on doing something to this, how we would do it, what are the options, what's the pros and cons, benefits and all that. Reason I say this is, if we reconstruct a street, like Mr. Layman, when we did yours, we dug up the main and we bring a sewer service, brand-new sewer service to the property line out of the sewer fund. Now we've got a new main in the street, basically lined. Should we pay for that sewer service? Should we line those services out of our sewer fund? That's kind of the question and program that I'm looking at. I think it's worthwhile investigating. That's kind of the question and program that I'm looking at. I think it's worthwhile investigating, finding out what the costs are. How many services do we really have, and bring back a report in twenty fourteen.
Bruce, what's the primary benefit of taking on those service lines?
Well, the primary benefit for the city, we don't have to have people digging up on the street. Also, I think you'll have residents that'll be happier if their service does go out and don't have to pay fifteen thousand. We, we line that service. Now you've got a good service for peace of mind. So our benefit would be, we don't have all these street cuts on a street. We don't have to dig it up. We can line it without having to dig.
So I'm confused a little bit. So this is roads where we're not doing reconstruction projects on in the near future? Is that where we would do this, or does that not matter?
It, yes. I mean, we could, another option, if we want to do, if we were doing a reconstruction project, you could dig down and replace the sewer service. The main's already been lined. You don't have to replace that.
Sorry, Councilor Whiting?
But you would have to dig down then and replace that service. If we're not going to be doing a reconstruction, here's the other thing, if we're not doing a reconstruction, or even if we are, you could just pull out the curb and the pavement. You don't have to do any digging. It's already, all the underground's taken care of. Now you just replace the pavement and the curb and gutter.
You mentioned orange bird. Is any of our pipes that we can line orange bird, can we line the orange bird pipe, or is that something we still want to replace?
The way the program, I understand it is, a company would come out and it has to televise each service to see if it's lineable. There might be some of the lines we checked, really can't line it. It might be so bad that you have to dig it up. But yes, they would do what you call a pre-televising of the service line. Line it, then you do a post-television, make sure everything worked, it's connected properly. But that's something we don't know until we televise. And there's equipment that you can put in the main line and shoot a camera up to service line to see what it is.
That's Lehman?
I would guess, if I understand correct, I would go one step further, and I'd like to see the, the city within this possibly bulk the option for service lines even on projects that have already had a recon. I would take advantage of that at my house. I've already looked into it. It's, and you're right, it's about three grand. And the pipe has been televised. It's pretty good shape.
You mean from this, from the property line to your, to your building? And one of the things with this, and I wrote in the memo, that we could, I mean, what they've done in Idina, if you replace the service to the property line, if people want to go all the way to their building, they would be assessed that portion.
And see, they can, they can actually do it from inside the house outward.
Yep, and they can do it from, from outside. There's different, there's a whole, there's many techniques right now.
And if they went past the property line, they're now redoing the connection between the city service and the homeowner's service and making that connection better. So there's a benefit on both sides.
Yeah, yep. Actually, could I, I was going to have some videos here, but there's demonstration videos on how it works. But yes, you can actually restore the Y right to the main, all the way to the building if you want.
You know how I love those sewer videos though, Bruce.
They're R-rated or racy.
All right, we don't need that.
Well.
So what are you looking for from us on this item?
Just, are you more, are you interested in me pursuing a study? I mean, there's no commitment yet. Just go ahead and get a study done. We're studying it in twenty fourteen and.
What's the downside?
None. I mean, we could just leave it go, and when somebody's service goes out and they say, how come you guys didn't?
There is a downside. The downside is that we have a lot of extra treat, uh, street cuts to replace ser, service lines from houses into the street main.
Wait a minute, what's the downside of, of doing it? Of doing the, looking into it?
Of doing this project?
Of doing, of doing the study, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, I don't see any, just spending money?
And there's sewer fund dollars that we're using for the study.
It's a good use of the funds.
Yep. What's the life expectancy of cured-in-place pipe?
What's that mean?
What's the life expectancy of a clear, uh, cured-in-place pipe?
I would, it's, it's basically a PVC pipe. It's like fifty years.
Okay.
Or more. We really don't know yet, but it's, nothing really attacks PVC.
We've set it up in, in the asset system as a future, like.
See if I can go back to. I had two more slides here. Here we go. Ah, got to get over here. There, there's your alleys. You guys know about the interchange and the bridge, and that's it. Well done.
Beautiful. Any further questions?
Well, we do have the, the five-year CIP completed, and we will route that out to council. But we just wanted to bring forward the two years to keep it a little less complicated and have some reality. Because as you see, there's a lot of projects here, and I think right now getting past two years is just almost unrealistic.
There's the five years for both parks and for?
We have it for all the capital elements, and we also have it for the funding sources. Because one of the things that you'll see when you go through this is our funding sources are very, very diverse, from the assessments to the Minnesota State Aid. We have projects that have SPUC funding and participation, county funding. As we found out, we don't oftentimes have that real clearly defined, even right into the project. So it really has to be refined, and we'll be doing a lot more of that this fall.
Thank you. All right, any other questions about the CIP work? All right, seeing none, uh, we've covered everything, correct, just to make sure I'm not missing anything tonight with our agenda hopping? All right, item number five, adjourned to August seventh, twenty thirteen. Councilor Lehman?
Bushing to adjourn to August seventh.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Anybody, Councilor Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We are adjourned at nine forty-one. Thank you very much, everyone.